Good evening. We're gonna start our meeting and I'm gonna turn this over to Mrs. Vajshaker for our pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, thank you very much. The children in the ELL program would like to lead us in the pledge. They've been studying the pledge and making sure they pronounce everything correctly, so we would like to let them get up.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in which equal will liberate and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Thank you Skinner Road School for welcoming us this evening. I would like to also take a moment of silence in memory of our student who died tragically this weekend. If you could do that, please. Thank you.
Item 1, this is the English English.
I will turn this over immediately to Mrs. Vajshaker to introduce her students.
Thank you very much, everybody. We did send out an invitation a bit of time to come early if you could at about 6:30 and meet all the families of all of our children who are involved in the ELL program. So we thank everyone for attending and meeting some of the families that are in Vernon. The ELL program has a little bit closer to 100 students. This year, about 78 of students took the last links and we just reported that. They've been progressing very well. And we have the four teachers who are in the program to do a little presentation for you and have you learn a little bit about our program in Vernon. I'd like to introduce our ELL teachers. Ms. Ken Chemin is at Center Road School. We've got Agatha Kavarr and this is her home territory, Skinner Road School. And we've got Mrs. Schubert. She's hiding. Ah, voila. Mrs. Schubert is at Vernon Center Middle School. And then we've got Margaret U. Mattz from Rockville High School. So I will turn it over to Ken Chemin.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight, we just have a few quick little presentations for you. Something to give you a little bit of our cultural flavor that we get as ESL teachers, that we get the privilege of seeing every day. And this is what's really so amazing and fun about our job. So I have Jacob is going to do a poem in Polish for you.
Piotruś nie był dzisiaj w szkole. Antek zrobił dziurę w stole. Wanda obróz poplamiła. Zosia szli i nie umyła. Jurek zgubił klucz, a wacek zjadł ze stolu cały placek. Któż się ciebie o to pyta? Nikt. Ja jestem, skarży pytał.
Next, we have Julia, who's also going to read you a poem in Polish as well.
Na wyspark bertamutach podobno jest kod butach widziano także w osła, którego brówka niosła. Jest kura samograjka snosząca złote jajka. Na dąbach rosną jabłka w gronostajowych czapkach. Jest i wielorybstary, co nosi okulary uczonych sąsosie w pomidorowym sosze. I trastresowane szgury na szczycie szklanej góry jest słońc stąbany dwema i tylko bez wtychnienia.
Next, we have a group. If you are going to sing part of the Pakistani national song, would you please come forward? Come this way. This way.
Pastr zemień szadba, kliszczet e hasin szadba. Tu niszane azme a ryszal, arze Pakistan, märkze latin szadba. Pastr zemień ka nizam, huwate ak huwate awan. Komul sultanat, paedata bindaba, szadba manzal e murad. Pastr szkaro hilad, zehre terekio kamad. Turgmane masi szan e ha, ghane glaste sad, sahe tughan e tana.
Thank you, boys and girls, and your wonderful families for bringing your food tonight. That was so exciting and wonderful to see you all. Thank you. So we have one last presentation that we would like to do. And I hope that you don't mind that while we are celebrating our cultural diversity in Vernon Public Schools, that we also take the opportunity to demonstrate our gratitude to the woman who made this all possible, Mrs. Debbie Marasso. First of all, we would like to thank you for your incredible forethought and vision that saw a need in our schools and created a program unlike any other in the surrounding communities or the state. At a time when most districts were barely recognizing this population of ELLs, you were not only identifying them, but opening doors of possibilities. This program, your program, recognized that teaching English was important, but so was the expectation that these students should and would be able to handle the rigors of the mainstream curriculum in classrooms. Secondly, we also want to thank you for your art and support and advocacy for our students and this program model, which has seen great successes. Your vision and planning has allowed for some of our students to achieve great things, such as attending college, medical school, becoming engineers, social workers, fashion designers, teachers, and so much more. Each student tonight, present, is a small representation of the lives that you've touched through the ESL program. As they come forward, they present to you flowers, which represent both our students' past and present. And they will thank you in their native language. Thank you from all of us, and we wish you well in your retirement. We will miss you. Thank you, Debbie, and thank you to all of our ELL teachers and all of our students who shared some of their language. The tough thing for families who are living here, trying to learn English, they're trying to teach their children English, research says that the English that they will learn and that they will be proficient in is only gonna be as good as however, you know, well they can master their own language. So tough, tough job for the families to make sure that they learn both languages at the same time. So we thank you for your help and we thank you for your help in celebrating today. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that wonderful presentation. At this time, I'd like to take, use the priority of the chair to move item 7.1 up to the next presentation. This is our German-American partnership program. We have a presentation also from them that I think would be appropriate to do at this time. At this time, I would ask that Mr. Lewis come forward with his program. Thank you.
We'd like to thank you all for having us here tonight. Mr. Lewis and I took a great group of Rockville High School students to Frankenburg, Germany this past April. And we had a phenomenal trip and we are gonna show you quickly a slide presentation. And Jenna's gonna present it for us.
Good evening. My name's Jenna and I put together this PowerPoint presentation. It's just a brief overview of the trip that we took in Germany. GAPS stands for the German-American Partnership Program. And it's just a foreign exchange trip that us high school students took over to Germany. And the German students also joined us over in the fall. Sorry. This is the list of the German students that were a part of the program, the American students that were a part of the program, and a few of the teachers, though there were many more that accompanied us on different trips. We stayed in East Germany, but we took trips to Berlin and Dresden and we flew into Munich. And you can see with the arrows where those towns are. And it was a three-week trip and the dates of the trip are at the last bullet point. And the black circle on the side is the state in Germany where we stayed. We visited three major cities. We flew into Munich, and that's in Western Germany. And we visited the capital of Germany, Berlin. And we visited the capital of Saxony, which is Dresden. We flew into Munich, which is the capital of Bavaria. And while we were there, we did a quick scavenger hunt to learn about some of the history of the town. And we ate dinner at the Hofbräuhaus. And you can see in the picture some of the shoe flatlers. And it was a fun night. And we went to an indoor water park that weekend as well. In Berlin, the capital, we had a presentation at the Ministry of Defense. And we also took a bus tour around the city and went to the Brandenburger Tor. And we went up to the TV tower at night, and you can see in the picture as well. We also went to the Olympic Stadium. The next city we visited was Dresden, and that's located in East Germany. It was my favorite city. And it's the capital of Saxony and the 12th largest city in Germany. And it's very interesting because it's divided into new and old Dresden. And we spent our time in the old part, and there's a lot of history there. And you can see, we had a lot of fun. The city where we stayed was Frankenburg, and that's where the school was. And we did a church tower tour, and this is where the pictures were taken from. This picture was from the German Museum in Munich. And it covered a lot of German history. And you can see in pictures, different evolution of tools and inventions. And this was my family. And so while we all were on the same trip and experienced a lot of the same things, we all had different experiences because we all had different host families. And so this was my family that I stayed with. These were pictures from the welcome party. We played a lot of games, and that was my partner and I. This was back at the church tower tour. You can just see inside of the church and then at the top. While in Dresden, to learn about some of the history, we did a bike tour to get around town instead of walking. It was a fun way to easily and quickly get around. And it was a seven-person bicycle, and it was a range in the circle. It was very fun. We also went to the Snowman Land, and they were little wooden figurines. And they gave us little pieces and we got to make our own. And so that was the one that I made on the right. We also went to the Camera Obscura in the next town over, Heinischen. And it's kind of like a large version of a camera. It's a dark room that you stand in and it manipulates the light and mirrors to project an image on a table. And so you're seeing what's happening outside, but instead of a picture. We also went to a real-life castle, and it's the Creepstein Castle. And we learned dances while we were there. And then afterwards, we participated in a rope climbing course. And while we were there, we attended the Martin-Luther Gnadio. But we also visited the other schools, the Miltschula and the elementary schools that were in Heinischen. And we did presentations to the German students in many different classes. And we did a lot of different activities with many of the students. We visited two mayors while we were there, in Heinischen and Frankenburg, because we visited schools in both of those towns. And these are pictures from the farewell party. So a typical day was having breakfast and going to school. Sometimes, usually, well, not sometimes. Usually, we would have a day trip after school, or if we were in Munich or Berlin or Dresden. And we would have dinner, and with my family, we would just talk about what we did because the day was usually packed with things. And after dinner, we would watch movies, and I would Skype with my family. I'd get to call my friends. And my partner was in a youth group and on the swim team, so sometimes we'd go to swim practice or the youth group. So it was very busy. But on special days, we would go shopping. And my partner's birthday was in April, so for her birthday, we went to the zoo. We also went hiking, and we went back to Dresden one of the weekends. School is organized differently there, and so it was different adjusting. But they have six to eight classes each day, and they have breaks between all of their classes that are 10 to 30 minutes long. And so depending on the day, school will either end at 1:10 or 3:10. And breakfast is not on the go. I know I usually eat mine on the bus, if I even eat it at all. But every day there, I always had to sit down, breakfast at the table. And the hot meal of the day was always lunch, and dinner was usually lighter. And we always had different foods. And even though they had fast foods, I barely ate any while I was there. We mostly ate at small cafes or the duna shops, which is what is in the picture. Transportation was a lot different there. Instead of driving everywhere like we do here, they walked a lot or took the trains. But they also had trams, and lots of people rode their bikes or buses. And they did a lot of shopping. Certain towns had very many small shops. And even though the mall was about 15 to 20 minutes away from the town that we were staying in, they went there kind of often. And there was a lot of expensive clothing and shoe stores. And it was smaller than our mall, but there was another one right next to it. And it was located right off of the major bus and train station. So the keyboards are different there, and the school system and transportation is different there. And they're very energy-conscious, so they recycled everything that we used. And they always had their doors closed to retain the heat. And there was a lot more open land. But there was also many things that were the same. So sometimes I forgot that I was even in a different country, but... I did miss a couple things, like my dog and my phone and my friends and all of my clothes. But I had a lot of fun in Germany. Some of my favorite things were the bike tour in Dresden and going hiking with my family. I liked the hazelnut ice cream in English class because that's the only one I could understand. I loved the city of Dresden, and my favorite food was the schnitzel. Any questions?
Mr. Gutter?
Thank you, Mrs. Yerwein. Two questions. What do you like the most, what you did not like, or what did you like the least?
What I liked the most was just having a new experience and independence. Like I was away from my family, and so it was, it was nice to be able to be on my own. What I liked the least was having to manage my own money and pay for things.
Thank you.
We see such a change in these students in the 21 or 22 days that we're traveling. Many of them have never traveled outside of the state of Connecticut, or if they've gone on a trip, it's been in the United States. So some, you know, this is their first airplane, you know, flight. And you see such a growth process in these three weeks. They become so independent. They think for themselves. And the one thing that we really see that they take away is they become a family. They become a team, and they watch out for one another. They support one another. And then the growth that we saw between the German students and the American students, this trip was amazing. They really, we saw them bond in a way that was quite unusual. So this was a very successful trip.
Mr. Sarn?
Are there other students here who went to Germany?
Yes.
Could we meet them too?
Yes, we'll have to come over.
This is our great family.
Hold it, guys. Hold it, hold it, hold it.
There's a portable bike somewhere.
Yeah, I have that. I'll get it for them.
My name is Elena Markhat, and I'm a 12th grader at Rockville High School.
My name is Nick Thierfeld. I'm also a 12th grader at Rockville High School.
My name is Sam Markhat, and I'm in the 10th grade.
My name's Kira Danforth. I'm 11th grade.
My name is Beth Murray, and I'm in 9th grade.
My name is Melissa Champagne, and I am in 11th grade.
My name's Cheyenne West, and I'm in 10th grade.
My name is Reed Kenny, and I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Thompson Lester, and I'm in 11th grade also.
Mrs. Sarn?
Could I ask the group if they had any really unique experiences? Could they share them with us?
Well, the food in Germany was a lot different. There was a lot more meat. So Elena is a vegetarian. It was hard for her to find food to eat sometimes. But there was a lot of like sauces also. The food there was amazing, though.
Matt, on the bat, if you like. I witnessed the first vegetarian ever, meat.
And we went up to a pizza restaurant, and it was very crowded. And so the German students asked to sit with brand new people, so we sat and ate with brand new people, which you definitely don't do in America.
Anybody else? Please.
Our bike always won.
Oh, our bike tour was the best.
They drive a lot faster over there, which is different. There's like no automatic cars over there. It's different.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. Thanks again. Have a great time.
Thank you for supporting us. That's very important to us. We really appreciate all of you supporting the GAPS program.
Yes, we couldn't do it without you. Much thanks for your support of the group.
Okay, at this time, we've got item 2.0, which is a consent agenda. I'd open up for a motion on the consent agenda. Mr. Percy?
So.
A motion on the consent agenda. Do I have a second? Ms. Sarn? I have a second. Do I have anybody who wishes to have any move for the consent agenda? Ms. Sarn?
Could you please pull item C?
Item C. And anybody else? So we'll pick and we'll vote on items A, B, D, and E. And by show of hands, all in favor? That's unanimous. And Mrs. Sarn, you have item C.
With minutes from May, from May 15. I wanted to clarify the motion that I made. I'm not sure it's quite represented.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page 1.
You're on page 1.
Bottom of the page. Actually, my motion was intended to encompass all money that's generated by the Board as revenue or should go to the Board as revenue, and then how much of that money is passed through money. This motion seems to have limited it to just pass-through funds. And I was looking for all the money, and counting of all of the money, and then differentiation of pass-through.
Okay, so I would, I understand it's a, an amendment that you'd like to see made in the form of a motion, to have that wording corrected.
Okay, I'd like to move to clarify my motion, to include all funding that goes to the town that is generated as revenue by the Board, that is money that is designated for the Board, and then to differentiate how much of that money is passed through money.
So that's the motion to amend this minute to reflect that intent in the motion. And is there a second? Mr. Percy?
Second.
So there's a motion and a second to clarify the intent on that motion. Is there any debate on that? Seeing none, by show of hands, a bit of ass, all in favor? And those opposed? Any abstention? You're for or against? Abstention, okay. One abstention. And that motion goes past. Moving on to item three point zero. One more. Ms. Sarn.
You've amended a piece of that body of minutes, but having to pass the minutes as a whole.
Okay. We can put that to a vote in that format. So now that we've agreed on the amendment, we'll put the motion to approve those minutes as amended to a vote. Ms. Sarn.
Sarn.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to do that. Is there any discussion on that motion to approve? Seeing none, I'm going to call for a vote by a show of hands, all in favor. Those opposed? And those abstaining? And there's one abstention. And that motion does pass as well. Thank you, Mr. Kemp. And now we'll move on to item three point zero, which is the secretary's report. And item three point one, opportunity to add or delete agenda items. Is there anybody who wishes to add, delete? Ms. Fisher.
I would just like to make a motion that we move item five point two to become seven point nine, so we can do the executive sessions at the end of the meeting.
Okay, I have a motion to move item five point two to item seven point nine. Is there a second on that motion? Ms. Goldich. I have a motion and a second. Is there any debate on that motion? Seeing none, I will move that to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor. And that's unanimous. Does anybody else wish to move, add, or delete any agenda items this evening? Yes. And Ms. Fisher.
Also on item seven point seven, I'd like to add the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen budget.
To that discussion.
To that discussion.
It's a motion. And is there a second on that motion? Mr. Percy.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to include discussion on the twelve thirteen budget in seven point seven. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, by show of hands, all in favor. And that's unanimous also. Mrs. Sarn.
I'd like to make a motion for a future agenda item to relative to PBIS to have a discussion of discipline. My suggestion would be scheduled for the next three meetings. To include examples and applications of our board policy, statistics regarding numbers of offenses, types of offenses, and disciplines administered for those offenses. And my suggestion would be to start with Rockville High School.
Okay, I heard you say discussion PBS discipline over three meetings?
My suggestion would just be, be welcome to a friendly amendment, but I thought it would be too much to do perhaps in one evening. I thought if we started with the high school, middle school, and then just the elementary schools.
Okay, and these are items that are not covered in the other report that we have received from the Superficial on...
Oh, no, no.
So there's a motion to add future agenda items to discuss PBIS discipline, the execution of that discipline, and how it's carrying out our policy. Is that a fair gist of your minutes, or your motion?
I think so. Offenses, types of discipline that's administered for those offenses. And just relativity to the board policy.
Ms. Kemp, are you clear on that? Are you okay? Okay, good. I just want to make sure you have that. And do I have a second on that motion request? Mr. Nicholson is seconding that request. Is there any discussion on that motion? Mr. Kemp.
I'm not sure what we're being asked to do. We receive a presentation from staff. So how does this distinguish itself from that? Is the first question. And the second one is, if you're asking for all offenses, I mean, I don't know how far down you drill in the offenses category. Are we talking about, you know, talking in the halls? What are we talking about here in the definition of offenses? Are these offenses that might be suspendable ones or expellable ones? Or what level of offenses are we... Or behaviors that are not appropriate? I'm not sure what we're asking for.
Ms. Sarn, could I ask you to clarify that piece of your motion?
Sure. I think if you reference the student handbook at the high school or at the middle school, it spells out pretty clearly what is acceptable behavior and what is not, and what the consequence is for unacceptable behavior. I was just looking for an accounting of. They don't need to be suspendable. They may be detentions. Whatever is in the student handbook, that is what's reflected in the student handbook from our board policy. And it's just an accounting of numbers of offenses and the discipline taken relative to those offenses. Just what's in the student handbook.
Mr. Kemp, if I could just ask Dr. Conway, is this something that, do we keep a journal or log that we'd be able to refer to?
Absolutely. We have these reports and the administration reviews them all the time. The only clarification I would make is that you won't see a connection. You will see the number of in-school, out-of-school, and detentions that are given. And you will also see the number of class cuts, swearing, whatever it is. And so you'll have two reports, but you won't see a one-to-one correlation. So you won't be able to see if the handbook said that if you mouth off to a teacher and you get an in-school suspension, you won't see that one-to-one correlation. You will only see that we have a hundred in-school suspensions and we might have had ten of different types of offenses. So it's okay. It just won't be one-to-one.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we clarified. And now I'll go back to you, Mr. Kemp.
That was the first question, but it's also going to prove interesting if the monitoring of these behaviors varies from one elementary school. If we're going to drill down to the elementary level, I don't know. Are there any statistics maintained at the elementary level on excessive talking? This kind of thing? What are we after here?
I'm sorry. Thank you very much, Mr. Vol through you. There are a list of offenses that are standard in our database. And so each elementary school would categorize them in that way. And these are, we use these lists and they have the same codes in all seven schools. And the difference you might have is that way you have progressive discipline. So a student has done something and the student may get a detention the first time and then a suspension from lunch the second time at the elementary or recess and on and on. So there would be progression. And so you might not see, you know, you're going to see offenses very similar to the high school and middle school. You'll see the name of the offense and how many there were. And then the consequences and how many there are for each school.
Is there any other questions or does Ms. Bush?
Is this something that we can be emailed so that we can have a look at it? And possibly, I mean, is this something we really need to have a discussion about? There's no specific, you know, there's no ties to any, how the guidelines in the handbooks would go. This is just numbers. And I think that would be more informational than it would be for discussion.
Can we go back to Ms. Sarn?
I would suggest that the information would prompt some discussion that this board should be having. We do a lot of work with PBIS. And I think that some of the results of that can be seen in the numbers. And I think there is discussion around the offenses and the correction of those offenses that this board should be having. I'm not looking just for the numbers. I think it will inspire some discussion.
So this is potential recommendations for policy to take and consider, I would assume? Is this, that's where we can, that's where we would have the ability to make any differences? And potential policy change? So we may be looking for information from administrators on ways that we could help with through policy or areas of issue with policy?
Yes. And is our policy being applied? If it's not being applied, is it because the policy is ineffective? Do there need to be changes made?
So I think that does warrant, or does give grounds to a discussion if that's how we can definitely have an impact. Other discussion, dialogue, debate? Ms. Sarn.
May I suggest, I know that's all it can be, but perhaps if we're starting with the high school, maybe an administrator or two, or a teacher or two, whatever, could be invited to attend, not requested, I mean, not required, but invited to attend if we're going to be talking about more than just the numbers. It might be helpful for the discussion to have someone here from administration of high school or teachers, whoever would like to participate.
I think it's always good to support your data with some details. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'm going to call the motion to a vote. And that is, I'm not going to repeat the whole motion, but it's basically to have a discussion regarding PBIS and our implementations. That's just a quick summary. All in favor of the motion? By a show of hands, please. And that's going to be unanimous. Is there any other? Still on additions and deletions. Seeing no other hands, we will move on. We don't have a student representative this evening. I did receive a note from Olivia saying that she would not be able to attend this evening. So she did send her apologies. We'll move on to item four point zero. This is a community forum. It's the opportunity for comments on the agenda items, potential future agenda items, or general information provided to the board from citizens and community organizations. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board this evening? Please come forward and state your name and address for the records.
Tanya Dameiro, one thirty-eight Crow Street. I wish my ears could be flown tonight since I can't be in twenty places at one time. I'm kind of wishing I had a way to sort of plug in a microphone so I could hear all the audio that's going on around town tonight. I'm here for two reasons. You know that our budget did not pass for the second time, which is truly unfortunate. But I am going to ask that our marquees in front of our schools have budget referendum vote and a date for the next referendum. It's kind of scary to me, the number of people who are surveyed who say they have no idea for the second time that we have a vote in town. And I know you can't tell us how to vote. Your email was fabulous. I greatly appreciate it. But I think those in town who don't have children in the school system or who don't receive email, it might just be one more sign. I know the town does great with the big ones. I'm not sure how you miss them, but apparently some people are missing them. So there's a little marquees out in front of the towns. I know it has kindergarten registration right now. But I'm asking that maybe we adjust those for the week of the referendum just to sort of remind people that they can go to vote. And secondly, as I have been looking through the budget more and more with each referendum, the magnet school line just keeps bothering me. And I've gone through all of my notes and maybe I have thrown them away after attending so many of your meetings. But I'm looking for information or accounting of what would happen hypothetically if all the students who are out at magnet schools currently were to come back to our district. What would that financially do to us? Is it less money, more money, the same money? I'm just intrigued to know those numbers. I don't know where to find them. I'm not necessarily asking somebody to do the work, although I think it would be a great presentation at a board debate meeting to sort of see the comparison. You know, kids who are special ed who go to magnet schools, do we pay the cost of that? Does a magnet school pay the cost of that? How does it all break down in terms of numbers? If those hundred and whatever, I guess it's one fifty, maybe one sixty currently, if they were to come back to our district, what would that do to us? In terms of, will we need more classroom teachers? Because numbers would be over the requirement. I would be just very intrigued to see that financial analysis. And I don't mean to put more work on somebody's plate, but it's something that keeps coming into my brain. And it was reminded of me today through a conversation I was having with someone. So if that's at all possible, I would greatly appreciate it. And thank you.
Thank you. Just for one, we do pay the special ed costs for the kids that do go up to magnets. We are responsible for that news. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to Community Forum this evening? Seeing no other hands, we'll move on to item four point one. Burning Public School Celebration of Skinner Road School.
And I would ask Mrs. Simon, if she would like to share some good news from Skinner Road School, who is our host this evening. We're very, very grateful. Mrs. Simon.
Thank you and welcome to Skinner Road. You saw a beautiful presentation that was pulled together by Mrs. Kavar for this evening. And that gives you a flavor of what Skinner Road is like. Everyone comes together. People pulled to put something together when asked at short notice. Our students, since I've been here, have been absolutely wonderful. They've had a number of field trips. I thank Dr. Conway for putting together the Friday Good News because it really, for me, makes me reflect on all the things that we do and all the things that are going well. So thank you and thank you for coming to our school.
Thank you very much and thank you for having us. Right, we'll move on to item five point zero, Personnel, which, item five point one, Appointment of the Assistant Principal at Rockville High School.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vol. Last fall, one of our curriculum people left the district. And we were very fortunate to have another administrator in the district who was very interested in that position. And then now has accepted that as an assignment going forward. But we also had an opportunity to ask someone to be an interim assistant principal. So this was Mr. Edward Ted Brewer coming out of the Science Department at the high school who had recently completed his internship at Glasser Mary High School and done an outstanding job. He was a very well-respected member of the high school community and very involved in the NAS process. He's the co-chair of the steering committee. And that process has just actually begun. He may think it's over. It's really, really begun. But Mr. Brewer has done an outstanding job since he took this on at the end of November, beginning of December. And he has a great interest in continuing this position. And so I would recommend him to you for appointment to that position.
Thank you. There is a proposed motion on item five point one. Mr. Percy?
I'd like to make a motion on the Burner Board of Education to approve the appointment of Mr. Edward Brewer as assistant principal of Rockville High School, beginning July first, two thousand thirteen.
I have a motion. Ms. Bush?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Ms. Sarn.
Was the position posted or was anyone else considered for the position?
Different, Mr. Conway.
Mr. Chair, no. Why? Because we're growing our own talent.
And Mr. Guter, did you...
Right.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the motion to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor. And those opposed? And that motion passes with one post. Okay, we'll move on to item six point zero, which is Curriculum. And, Mr. Room, by the way, congratulations to the audience this evening. Six point zero, Curriculum. Item six point one, donation from the Sykes Foundation. Dr. Conway or Mr. Marasso?
I will turn this right over. Thank you, Mr. Vol, to Mrs. Marasso. And do you have the slides?
Thank you very much. I'm very pleased to share with you the work of our grants administrator, Jerry Griffin, and all of the teachers and department chairs in the career and technical education areas. Because a picture is worth a thousand words, I thought I'd like to celebrate this year's accomplishments. accomplishments we've first before sharing with you the exciting news of next year's four new projects. As you may recall, Sykes dollars this year supported our first steps into the interdisciplinary field of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. The project's focus was solar energy, fueled by students and teachers who applied for and were granted a $20,000 award from CLMP's Live Green, Win Green competition. With dollars gifted from the Sykes Foundation, students are now able to analyze and monitor the impact of a 12-panel solar energy unit installed on the high school's roof. They are able to apply their own mechanical engineering skills in the construction of their own solar panels. And they are also able to extend their learning and understanding of wind turbine energy as well. This equipment, which was purchased with the Sykes dollars, is really one of its kind in a public high school. Most of our technical high schools have this type of technology, but not normal public high schools, so we're very pleased to be able to add this to our technology education department. In the area of video production, with equipment purchased from Sykes, students are now able to develop high-quality videos using industry-level equipment and software. It was this software that actually supported the creation of the award-winning video from the CLMP competition. So, students are able to learn and develop marketable skills in cinematography and are actually applying those skills in our own modern theater classes. So, there's a lot of integration happening. In the area of business and computer science, two of our classrooms, one each at VCMS and Rockwell High School, received a complete makeover. These new technology environments have created much enthusiasm and energy in learning. An old 20th-century environment with rows of tables and computers stacked upon them has now been replaced with modular furniture and new and exciting technologies that provide students with the opportunity to practice collaboration, problem-solving skills, to use current professional technologies, and to engage one another in an environment that simulates preparation for both college and career. This is what the new lab looks like at Rockwell High School, with video conferencing equipment available as well. This year's proposals are no less exciting. In the works is a renovation of the machine shop. Just as we turned our old Betty Crocker kitchens into industry-model culinary environment, our goal is to turn the machine shop into a fabrication lab. And this is the design of that new lab. The plan calls for the creation of an environment which will host technologies for research and development. That would be the computers on the left-hand side of the environment, platforms for design and modeling, and equipment for the fabrication of prototypes. Laptops, movable furniture, projection equipment, a five-access CNC router, and a 3D printer will complement the current technologies in the lab and provide students and teachers of multiple disciplines the potential to engage in collaborative teaching and learning. In agricultural science, the purchase of a compost tumbler will provide students hands-on involvement with the processing and chemical analysis of organic compost production. In addition to the cost savings associated with the disposal of our own animal waste, as well as potentially some of the cafeterias and family and consumer science departments, the compost will be used in our own greenhouse, it will be used in our horticultural classes, it will be used for our animals bedding, and it can also be sold. There's also the potential for interdisciplinary learning related to chemistry, environmental science, physics, and mechanical engineering. And finally, in the area of business and computer science, two more of our classrooms, one each at VCMS and RHS, will receive makeovers. Fresh environments with exciting new technologies will help close the digital pothole and will engage students in learning experiences that are empowering and engaging. This is the computer lab at Rockwell High School that will be made over. This is the concept of what it will look like, modular furniture. And this is the old or the current business lab at the middle school, which will also receive a makeover. So, the good news is, is that our presentation to the trustees on May 6th, they shared our enthusiasm and approved a gift totaling $145,802.22 for these four new projects. This donation represents the largest gift approved by the Sykes Foundation to date, and for that, we are extremely grateful. We would request your approval of this donation this evening. It would be remissly not to mention that we understand that some of the equipment requested through the projects, specifically the 20 math books for the RHS Business Computer Center, would not meet the expectations of the tech, the Technology Education Council. The philosophy of the tech is for the use and purchase of one platform. And while that one platform might be the best option for challenged use of technology and for most obvious use of technology, that philosophy is not always the best option for the educational use for teaching and learning, nor does it advance the goals of our technology plan, which is to create technologically diverse learning environments and to provide our students with access to technology with which they're not familiar. Our teachers feel very strongly about the use of the 20 math books, and specifically for the project at Rockwell High School. In your pack of this evening is a copy of the actual proposal that we presented to the Sykes Foundation, which identifies all of the equipment purchased through the four projects. You will see for each project, there's a listing of the equipment for which we are requesting Sykes funds, and then it's followed by a listing of other expenses for which we are using other funding sources. For example, for the fabrication lab at Rockwell High School, a significant amount of money is going to fund other equipment and services that will come out of the Win Green, Live Green Competition Award. Also, dollars will be used from the Carl Perkins Grant, and some of the dollars represent in-kind contributions from the Vernon Board of Education, such things as using our own maintenance men to do electrical work and that kind of thing. Because the work of the Sykes Foundation is really a collaboration with the Vernon Schools, we thought it important to share with you on the very last page what the contributions were from the Vernon Board of Education for this year's projects. And you can see that almost $200,000 of our dollars were used to support this year's projects. Again, a representation of the true collaboration that exists between foundations and the Board of Education to improve program in the career and technical education areas. Have a response to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Marasso. There is a proposed motion, and Ms. Bush?
I'd like to make a motion that the Vernon Board of Education acknowledge the legacy of George Sykes and the work of the Sykes Foundation trustees, and accept with gratitude the donation of $145,802.22 to support and enrich the career and technology education programs for the students of the Vernon Public Schools.
I have a motion. Mr.?
A second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there discussion or questions regarding the motion? Ms. Sarn?
You mentioned Carl Perkins and in-kind donations. Will all of the board's responsibility be paid for by something other than the board's budget?
Yes.
And are there any other questions? Seeing none, I do have a motion and a second on the... There we go. Acceptance of the grant. I will ask for a vote by a show of hands, all in favor. And that's unanimous. Moving on to item 7.0, which is our general business, 7.2, which is the discussion on board subcommittees and structures. Dr. Conway did provide us with some information in our packet last week. Ms. Sarn, I believe you had requested this agenda item, and I'll give you the floor at this time if you'd like to start the discussion.
The thought began as a participator on a curriculum committee. I think I've said a couple of times that I feel very inadequate participating in that committee because I'm not a curriculum expert. We hired the experts. So, for me, as a committee member, to recommend to the board that we approve the curriculum that's presented by the experts seemed kind of silly to me, quite honestly. I thought that it was more appropriate that the board hear the same presentation that we hear and make that decision collectively. That led to other thinking about how our committees are structured and the numbers of meetings that we commit to every month. And Terry and I put our heads together about streamlining the process, making us more effective, and making our time out more effective, and actually doing more work as a board. So, our suggestions were on the paper that we passed out. I'm not going to review them. I hope you all took a look at them. But our thought was that we could adopt a process, a subcommittee process like we suggested, and meet three times a month, three Mondays a month, and do all of our work at those meetings. We would still remain a committee of the whole for budget. Policy committee, we thought, needed to stay separate because that's always happening. It's ongoing. It would be too cumbersome for the entire board to participate in. Finance committee, curriculum, facilities, technology, communications, those are all things that the board should be working on and should have knowledge about, and could actually do and reduce the time that we are spending at separate committee meetings, and then counting on others to provide us the information that we need. Streamlining, hearing the information firsthand, and making decisions at board meetings as committees of the whole would better serve us.
Does anybody wish to? Ms. Colton?
For me, one of the issues was time management. And I think tonight is actually a good example. We had Mrs. Marasso at our facilities meeting. She went through the exact same presentation as she just did for the Sykes proposal. We asked her to come to the board meeting to do the same thing all over again. It just feels redundant. A lot of the work that is done in some of the, like Michelle mentioned, curriculum, but in facilities and technology, information is given to us. There may or may not be a motion. Usually, there isn't a motion that we need to make, and then the same can be to come to the meeting of the whole, the board meeting itself, and do the whole thing over again. So, there was just a lot of redundancy. So, I just made some recommendations. We don't have to make any decisions about them. We would have to, if we did make decisions, we would have to revisit 9131, and thank you for supplying all the policies. I know we looked at 9131 in December, I believe, but we can certainly revise that to match whatever we look at when we start, when we think about a reorganization of the committee structure.
I would just like to just put one thing out there. As far as the curriculum committee, by general statute of the state of Connecticut, that is one committee that we are required to have. That is a job, a function of the board that we're supposed to take on. Some of the work that the curriculum committee would do is more involved than what we could accomplish in a meeting, a board meeting, for example. And as committee members, you have the right, you know, the chair of your committee has the right to call in, advise, to assist with those difficult things that you may not feel like you have the appropriate expertise on, to be able to help get us through whatever issues or concerns we have. But the work gets done in committee, and then what would be brought before the body would be a summary of that work. And that's how I've seen committees operate in the 10 years that I've been on the board, that it's really, the detail gets worked out in committee, and if you have questions, you send them back. You know, you have administration help us get whatever answers, or we get whatever expertise. And I think we would lose some of that with the proposal that I saw. And the other thing that I would put out there for the board to consider also is, I think this would be something that we'd have to send back to our policy committee probably for a bylaw change. Because there's operating bylaws, and we have the budget steering, which is a committee of the whole. The finance committee is set up so that we can handle some of the smaller details throughout the year without having to bring the committee of the whole, bring everybody out for a meeting, and then we can summarize again for the board on a board meeting. And then finally, the, yeah, I just think we'd have to go through bylaw changes, and everybody would have to agree on those changes in order to alter that process. So, we've got the budget steering, the curriculum, which is a required committee, the facilities, which is another required committee. We have to have a facilities committee based on statutes. And those are the three drivers. And then the other ones, we have the purview. The board chair has the purview to set up additional. For example, technology committee. We didn't have a technology committee last year, but technology plays a big part in our education process. I think that we should have a standing committee for technology to make sure that, you know, we set the right policy, the right tone for where we want to go, and that we can support the administration with things of that nature. So, that's where the board chair can add those additional committees. Ms. Sarn?
I'd just like to clarify, Dean. We weren't suggesting that those are not responsibilities of the board, not at all. We were, our thinking was that we could streamline the process. For clarification, could the committees that are required, can they be committees of the whole, or do they need to be separate subcommittees of the board? Okay, then we can get that answered.
I was going to say, I think we'd have to review our bylaws to get the firm answer on that.
I also, it wasn't our intention to make sweeping changes this evening. Our intention was to just have board members think about, is there a way to restructure to be more efficient, to do more work in a smaller amount of time? Not abdicating our responsibility or shifting those responsibilities to someone else, just doing them in a different way. Oh, I know. And a sidebar to this would be, we're always looking for people to join us, and the time commitment alone scares people away. And we thought if there was a way to reduce that monthly meeting number to a more manageable number by doing work three nights, three evenings a month, with the exception of policy, like we said, we felt there needed to be a couple of committees that remained in place. But grievance committee, I think we've met once. There's no reason for the board not to do that. Expulsions, we always need for anyway. Finance, some of us go to those meetings because that's the, you know, nuts and bolts of what's going on. That's what we need to hear and to learn about. Facilities and technology and communication, the same thing. Those are all decisions that we should be making as a group, and we don't share the same information. It's not always available to all of the board members like it's made available to those people on the committee. So, sometimes it's hard to make the best informed decision when just by way of structure, we're kind of short-changed information sometimes.
Ms. Colton?
I believe it was Attorney Dorsey who said that the finance committee needs to be the committee of the whole, not the budget steering committee.
Actually, budget steering is the committee of the whole according to our bylaws, and that's when we draft, when we draw up our budget. We usually start that at the end of December, early January, and those are the budget meetings where we schedule the actual budget sessions where that's all we're talking about. That's the committee of the whole.
Then I would ask Attorney Dorsey to clarify that because I'm pretty sure that when he said it's the finance committee that needs to be the committee of the whole, that's when we all started meeting again. And then we had the finance and the budget, and I don't think anybody was really clear which was which for a while. So, we may just want to clarify that, too.
Dr. Conway?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cool, through you. Mr. Dorsey had read the board's bylaws, and by the bylaws prior to December, when the board changed that, it was described as a committee of the whole. So, you're exactly right, and that's what Mr. Dorsey said, is that really is a committee of the whole according to your bylaws. And that's why the policy committee recommended that change so that we could differentiate... And that's why the policy committee recommended that change, so that we could differentiate and have the budget steering committee be the committee of the whole, and the finance committee be a subcommittee. And the board had passed that on whatever date that was. Sorry, I don't remember the date. But you're right, that's what he said because of the bylaws, and so that's why the board changed the bylaws.
And I'm looking at the bylaws right now. It just says, "Budget Steering Committee shall be a committee of the whole and be responsible for preparing, presenting to the board the spending plan by which the school system will be operated in the coming fiscal year." So again, and that's how we do it, that January through whenever we actually get a budget passed. That's how we operate the budget portion.
Mr. Kemp.
For any number of reasons, over the years, board members decided that they wanted to be involved in certain aspects of what happens here. For instance, when you have a suspension or an expulsion. Our process has varied from time to time, but if you find yourselves meeting too often, you can designate a hearing officer to hear transportation hearings. It could be the superintendent or someone else. Whether or not you choose to be involved in suspensions or expulsions at all, it's really a board of ed decision. And I'm not looking at a law book right now, but there's that option. You can, you don't have to have some of these committees if you're wanting to be more efficient with your time. But what happened was, for one reason or another, I'll just pick on building committees as one of them, when a major change was going on with some of our structures, that committee expanded in its role and took on a whole life form of its own. As those major construction efforts subsided, and I would say right now they've subsided, one could say you don't necessarily have to have as many meetings or as many people. But when we were looking at planning on changing the whole high school around, or when we were changing the building, the ball fields around, VCMs and so on, that particular committee expanded in its activity, let's say, overall. So I just share that with you. But we ended up with a number of committees. It doesn't mean you have to continue with them. It would require that you trust the people that you name as the hearing officer, for instance, to make those decisions. Maybe the superintendent could advise us on what some of those hearing officer roles are. I'm thinking of the transportation hearings. We used to have lots of those, but that could be a hearing officer. You could do all the suspensions and expulsions yourself, I think, if the board designated you to be the person making those decisions. All I'm saying is, the board decided it didn't want to do that. You still could. So that's my opinion on that. The other thing I wanted to say is, as far as spending time in meetings, I feel very strongly that committee meetings should be minus a full quorum of the board that, and I don't think it's appropriate for more than the number that represents less than a quorum, to have board members there that numerically constitute a quorum. I just think it's bad governance, and for a long time, we have chosen not to do that. And I would encourage us to take heed of that thought of mine. In effect, one board member has said, "Well, I'm not there as a board member." I personally beg to differ. You are never not a board member. And you might always be able to vote if you chose to do it, because you are a board member, period. And calling yourself something other than that that evening is just not legally a fact. You could ask our attorney about that, too, I'm sure. But even if it weren't a matter of law, I think it's bad practice to have more than four people at a subcommittee meeting. That's all.
Mr. Persky.
I thought we'd spoken on three, Mr. Kemp. We've spoken to Attorney Dorsey about this, and he's okay with having more than four people at a committee meeting.
That was the clarification that he did give me, that it is okay to have more than...
So I understand what Mr. Kemp's saying is, he may not think, in his opinion, you know, causes issue or whatever, but if someone wants to attend a meeting so they can hear the nuts and bolts of a subcommittee meeting, that there's a lot of information given out in the subcommittees that isn't necessarily given out in a board of ed meeting just because of time constraints. So I completely understand why someone would want to go to a subcommittee meeting. Thank you.
Ms. Mush.
I think one of the efficiencies that we've worked out is to combine some of the meetings before the actual board meetings. So the information is fresh, and that might be where you see a lot of the redundancy. But we're seeing it before and making decisions if we should be making motions or holding back until we get more information, things like that. So I'm seeing that we're becoming more efficient by taking the meetings and putting them on nights of board meetings. I know we can't do that for all the meetings, but that's one way to streamline the procedure, and that's what I'm seeing, that in the committees I'm on, they're actually piggybacking with other things.
Other, Ms. Fisher.
I just want to have a question about the recommendation of number six, the negotiation. That is how the board used to do it when I first came on the board, and we've changed it in the last four years, where we just have one committee of four people who are on the negotiating committee.
Which was how you did it?
Pardon me? We had it where different board members would work on different contracts. And the reason we changed it is to have more consistency, and everybody understood. I know you recommended having better communication, which may fix that, but I do think that having the same four people do all the contracts really has made a difference and made our negotiations more effective.
Other discussion. Ms. Arnn.
I guess I'd like to leave this discussion with the idea that just because we've always done things a certain way, doesn't mean it's the best way to do them still. And as the faces around the table change, the needs change, or the desires change as well. The needs, the work that the board needs to do stays the same, but there are other ideas about how it can be done. And I would just ask that the board open up their mind and just consider, we're not suggesting relieving us of any responsibility at all. We're suggesting that there might be a more efficient way to do all the things that we need to do, rather than just because we've always done it.
And I might suggest that if we do want to investigate what our options are, that maybe we would have the policy committee invite Mr. Dorsey to sit in and do a review of our bylaw with them to be able to present to the board what our options are. Because I think if we're considering change, we need to know legally what we need to have in place versus what we have the flexibility on. And maybe we, you know, if there's a question, Mr. Kemp, about the who can sit down in a meeting, or what the quorum or decorum should look like at a meeting, maybe we should put some clarification to that as well. Just something I would suggest as a potential next step, to make sure that everybody is clear. Because if it's a question this year, after November, it could be a question again next year, because we could have different people at the table.
Ms. Arnn.
I move that the policy committee meet with Attorney Dorsey to discuss reorganization possibilities and report back to the board.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And then, Mr. Persky.
I'll second it.
Discussion on that motion. Mr. Kemp.
I don't know what Attorney Dorsey is going to do to suggest reorganization possibilities. That is a, I can only imagine that he shows up and we say, "Could you, we'd like to discuss with you reorganization possibilities." I don't know when the conversation will ever end. And we're paying him a tidy sum per hour. So I think that's a very unrealistic thing to ask our attorney to do. If there's a specific question we have, it ought to be directed through the superintendent to our attorney, and that's it.
Ms. Arnn.
I don't think it's as simple as one question, though. And we wouldn't be asking Attorney Dorsey what to do. We would be saying, "Can we do this? Can we do that? How would we structure our policy? What works best?" I don't think it's something that we can ask the superintendent to just ask Attorney Dorsey. We would need to discuss possibilities and ideas, find out if those are suitable based on the lawyer's expertise, and then report back to the board about our findings. Maybe we can make changes that would be more efficient, and maybe we can't. But I would hate to dismiss the whole discussion and turn it into one question to Attorney Dorsey.
I suggest maybe a revision, since your discussions here were really with subcommittees, is that maybe we start with reviewing our bylaws on committee. You know, what we have in there, because that's the area that you've raised the concerns on this evening. And I think that would at least give some focus for that discussion, which may then lead to those additional discussions. Just putting out there as a thought.
Ms. Persky.
One of the things I'm hearing from Ms. Arnn is, come November, the needs and the time availabilities of the board might change. So anything we do now, if we have new people in the seats, we might have to revisit down the road after November. So it's something maybe we look into, but realize that it might be something that changes as the needs of the board changes as well. We still have a job to do, but the committee structures might need to change, or the time of meeting and things like that might need to change. And so, like I said, bringing Attorney Dorsey in with his fees and then having to do it all over again, or something like that, would not be very efficient.
Mr. Kemp, your response?
I would be willing to not spend money on an attorney who will be giving us very precise answers based on specific questions. If you want to have a facilitated conversation, maybe possibly facilitated by Cave, that conversation, I could support that. But to bring a lawyer in here and sit here and field questions, I think is a huge waste of money and very unproductive, as long as we're talking about being more productive here.
Ms. Goldich.
I'd like to suggest a friendly amendment to the motion. If we do ask for Mr. Dorsey's help, and perhaps Cave is a better solution, if that would be more economical, that we frame it in such a way that we need to know what are the subcommittees required by state law for boards of ed, to look at our, have a look at our policy, have a look at case law. When Gary Broshue was here for whatever, two years ago or something, they have three committees, and that's it. But I don't remember what he said his committees were. So do you remember what they were?
I'm writing down somewhere.
Yeah, so I think if we have somebody look at the case law, what is the minimum that we need? That's the question.
And then, again, that's why I referred to our bylaws, because that governs how we do business, that's going to govern how the next boards do business, and that's why we want to make sure that that's the section we address in our bylaws for that same reason.
Mr. Kemp.
A lot of this also, frankly, is also political. There are five people sitting here who have been chairman of this board of ed, one, two, three, four, five, including you, Michelle. And when you were chairman, you did things a little different. We haven't done things the same forever. There are five chairmen here, prior chairmen, and each one reconfigured and changed the people around based on their skills and interests and the needs of the board at the time, and constructed committees based on what that chairman felt were the priorities of the board. I expect that'll go on forever. There'll be an election in November, and many of us may not be here. The interests and skills of those people will vary, and the needs of the board will vary. And I hope the committee structures and the composition of those committees will reflect all of those things. I don't know what an attorney is going to do to talk about that.
Ms. Arnn.
Two comments. I understand that the way the board functions is due to some of the latitude that the chairperson has, but the chairperson is still bound by our bylaws. So my suggestion is to take a look at how we're functioning, not questioning what the chairperson is doing, but looking to see if there's a more effective way for us to function. Secondly, I wouldn't suggest that we sit down with Attorney Dorsey and spin our wheels with him. It seems to me that the policy committee would need to meet to develop specific questions if there are areas that we would like to address and change. Then there would be questions to ask the attorney before we could come back and say to the board, you know, "This is what the policy committee thinks. They think that it's a philosophical question as well as a legal question." So the board policy committee, I suppose, could talk about the philosophy part of it, and then if there are changes or questions, then we ask Attorney Dorsey then, specific questions. My suggestion wasn't to sit down and just hash through it with him in an evening. It was to have specific questions for him, basically like Terry suggested. So I'm not negating the chairperson's role, and then the changes that a chairperson makes to the board. I'm talking about the structure and then within which the chairperson functions.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call this motion to a vote and to send this to policy for review with the appropriate personnel. All in favor of that motion? If I show a hand, please.
Is the motion to have Fred Dorsey there?
The motion is...
Or has that been changed?
I'm going to ask the secretary to read back what we have. Yep, please read back how you have it.
Ms. Arnn, I move that the policy committee meet with Fred Dorsey to discuss reorganization possibilities and report back to the board.
Yes. That is the motion.
And that is still the motion.
That is still the motion. I haven't heard anybody, I heard Ms. Goldich started to go down the road of a friendly amendment, but there was no motion or second on that. Ms. Arnn.
I'd like to offer an amendment to my own motion, that is, the policy committee meet to review restructuring of the board's subcommittees, and then if they feel the need, consult with Attorney Dorsey after that.
So it's a proposed amendment to your motion. Is there a second on that? Mr. Persky.
Right.
Point one, or I believe that's a substantially different motion. The first motion ought to be withdrawn entirely, in my opinion.
The only change was...
Ms. Arnn, would you like to speak to that motion?
I'm sorry. The only change was in the timing of the meeting with Attorney Dorsey. That's all. It's still the policy committee to meet to discuss restructuring committees, and then to consult with Attorney Dorsey, not meet with Attorney Dorsey initially.
So that's the amendment to your motion. Would you like to withdraw your original and make the motion what you were just describing for clarity for everyone?
Sure.
And with the second or...
Yep.
So the motion is to go to policy, discuss the committees, and if needed, refer to the attorney, Mr. Dorsey. Discussion. Mr. Kemp.
On a simple, practical matter, this is the end of May, and this board's here. We'll pick up again in September, but basically, there's, I think, one scheduled policy meeting in front of us before the end of the school year anyway. At best, if this ever even went to a policy, I'm still opposed... to a policy, and I'm still opposed to the motion, it wouldn't happen until sometime in the fall anyway, and then we have an election. I don't know why we'd be spending a nickel on legal advice for people that might not even be here. So, just...
Ms. Hart.
Could someone explain to me why the election has anything to do with restructuring subcommittee functions of the board?
Well, upon a new election, all the officers change on the board, and those new officers have to govern according to our bylaws. And so if we change our bylaws, the officers are going to be tied to those bylaws, so it shouldn't make any difference there.
Well, I was...
That would mean we'd have to take action before that new board was elected, otherwise they'd be coming into something blind. I don't know if that's Mr. Kemp's point or not. Other discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the motion to a vote by a show of hands. All in favor? And those opposed? I show three opposed. The motion does carry to go to Policy. Moving on, item 7.3, Technology Committee Report.
We have the Technology Committee Chair, Mrs. Bush.
Is there any...
Basically, what was discussed was the Sykes Foundation projects that we already presented tonight. So that was the whole Technology Committee Report.
And then I'll go to item 7.4, to the facilities, and again, Ms. Bush is...oh, Mr. Kemp, sorry.
That's all right, thank you. Part of the meeting tonight had to do with the Sykes Foundation grant, and then we moved into school security, presented by Mr. Picaro, and he will briefly touch on that at this point in time. And then, I'm not sure if Mr. Kleidens is here or not, but just...okay, Michael would talk about the security piece at this point, please.
Mr. Picaro, is that...are you talking about the item that we're going to talk about, school safety and security update? That's item 7.8, and that will be an executive session, discussion that we're going to...
Okay, I'll turn to that then.
...so we can conduct that discussion at this point.
In the area of construction and general maintenance, there is, I think, some money that we need to ask from the capital nonrecurring budget for purpose of connectivity to the high...to the high school and upgrading of the chimney, and there are pieces to that, as well as a Connecticut natural gas cost that Board of Ed must bear in the form of $2,500. And so we'd like to have a motion put together requesting not more than $50,000 to accomplish that. I think Laura may have the wording.
I think Terry has it, but it's not RHS, it's not RHS, Central Office.
I'm sorry, yes, Central Office.
The...Ms. Goldich, if Mr. Kemp is yield on the floor?
Sure.
You have a thought?
The motion is to request the Town Council to approve use of capital nonrecurring funds not to exceed $50,000 for natural gas upgrades to the Central Administration Building. The figures are 2,500 for bringing in the new line from the street, a chimney liner at $30,000, and all other improvements, the estimate is for $10,000. For the total of 42,500, so that's why we're requesting not to exceed $50,000.
And that's your motion?
That's the motion.
And do I have a second? Ms. Bush?
Second.
And motion and a second. Is there a discussion on the motion or questions? Mr. Picaro, you want to...
Through the chair, to Mr. Kemp, through Mr. Kemp as well. Just to give some additional perspective, Mr. Kleidens had discussed this evening at the Facilities Committee, performance-based contracting. This is work that we're doing collaboratively between the Board of Ed and the town to look at bringing natural gas service to our school buildings as well as to municipal buildings. Obviously, as a result, we can yield some cost savings down the road in our ability to use gas-fired boilers, which now at the Central Office, because of the board's approval, we do have that capability, but we don't have gas. So the $2,500 is a fraction of the cost of what it would cost us if we were to pay for it, all on our own, to have an independent contractor come in, or the gas company come in and run a gas line from the street, the main gas line, to the school building. We pay a portion of that under this performance-based contract that we're currently using with Connecticut...excuse me, with Northeast Utilities. The $10,000 would be for, as Ms. Goldich had said, for piping upgrades that would be required in the building to handle the increased pressure of the natural gas, as well as safety boilers to put around the new meter outside the school building. And we're looking at an estimate of about $30,000 for a new flue liner. It's not an entire chimney, but the inside liner of our existing flue, because if we switch over to natural gas, we have an increase in condensation based on the way the natural gas burns versus oil burning, and that would require us to have a flue liner in there for safety and prevent corrosion and break inside the flue. So again, that gives you a little bit more perspective so you can make a decision clearly.
Thank you, Mr. Picaro. Is there a question? Ms. Arn.
Are we going to need money for the security updates?
Through the chair, if I may. There is about $149,000 in our capital nonrecurring account right now. Yes, we will need money to make security updates...upgrades, and we will be discussing potential funding sources in executive session when we talk about school security.
You still have a thought?
So am I to understand that if we approve this $50,000 request for expenditure, that the money left would be sufficient to take care of security needs?
Through the chair, based on all of our security...on our security list, we do not have enough to cover all of that with $149,000 at this point in time in our capital nonrecurring account.
So you're saying we'd have to be seeking other sources regardless?
Yes.
Although I understand the savings that you're recommending, Michael, and I can't turn my notes up yet, I can't help but think that the security issues are much more important than the natural gas issue. And I have a hard time supporting a request for $50,000.
Other discussion? Ms. Bush.
One of the other issues is the current oil tanks. Replacing them would be over $100,000. So that would...the cost is so much less than replacing those oil tanks.
Other discussion? Mr. Kemp.
I don't know that the $42,000, whether you asked for it or not, is going to effectively dent what we might envision as security needs. The security requirements we may decide we want to have might make $42,000 pale in comparison, such that this town may be asked to bond the project, or go to the state for bonding, or do it locally. So I am encouraging you to pass this particular savings motion and realize the savings, and then view the entire security subject in a totally different light.
Ms. Hart.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Picaro, is...I'm admittedly ignorant about these things, so is there...what must be done and what would be done for cost savings, and then is there anything in the project that could be eliminated to reduce the $50,000?
Through the chair, that's a good question. First, I would highlight the oil tank. That's something Ms. Bush had brought up when we discussed the Facilities Committee, and I think I liked to mention that to Ms. Arn in the beginning. But there's a tremendous savings for us there, because once we switch over to natural gas, then we could backfill the oil tank with sand, and we won't have to worry about any remediation or potential leaks. And obviously, that can lead to thousands and thousands of dollars' worth of costs if there were an issue there. So I think that is a huge potential savings for us. And then obviously, the fuel savings when we switch over to the natural gas. But this is the minimum that is required to get the Central Office building online. We did defer the cost for the high school until next fiscal year, just so that we could keep some of our costs and expenditures from the capital nonrecurring as low as possible to begin this process of moving on to natural gas.
Other discussion?
Seeing none, I'm going to call that motion to a vote by a show of hands. All in favor? And those opposed? I show one opposed. Motion does carry. Mr. Kemp, is there anything else from a facilities perspective, or does that cover it until we get to security separately?
No, other than that there was room for the PMBC report, but the report was that there had been no changes as of this time.
Thank you, Mr. Kemp.
Moving on to item 7.5, which is an update on the special needs education facility. Dr. Conway, I would assume would have had Ms. Buell to the table.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Buell. Mrs. Buell will provide us with a verbal update. She's been very, very busy since the last board meeting.
Good evening. Thank you for asking me back. I am working on the direction that you had asked us, to explore the possibility of creating an alternative program in district, one that would be expandable, so that we could start by providing service to the students that we have a need for right this minute, as well as the possibility of bringing students from out of district back to districts, as well as bringing students from other districts into the program. I would first want to acknowledge that Mayor Eple did offer services from the town to work in collaboration with the Board of Ed to look at spaces. At this point, we...I am pleased to say that we're looking at a space within Rockville High School. So it would be an isolated wing at Rockville High School, kind of similar in theory to the TELF program. It would have its own entrance, would be completely isolated from the rest of the building. You know, the students, it would be like a self-service kind of situation. Students would remain on that wing and be serviced on that wing. So there are many things. I've met with...Bill Palusa and I have walked the site a couple times, as well as some other staff that, you know, getting ideas and kind of problem solving some things. So we're exploring, you know, what kind of physical changes would need to be made in order to bring the site up to speed for a program, working on staffing, scheduling, programming. Of course, we would need to relocate a couple of teachers or programs, so there's some adjustment there as well. Had conversation with the high school administration and high school teachers, department heads. So there are changes that would need to occur at the high school level, as well as setting up a nice new program for our students. So there are many pieces that would need to happen. We're talking about the moving that would be necessary, as well as the preparations for creating a site that is young, elementary-friendly, and welcoming to families in districts who might send their children there. You know, so we're looking at some of the specifics that we might need for the program, doors that would lock, creating a timeout space that would be inappropriate in alignment with the Connecticut State Department of Education standards, looking at some slight changes to exterior doors, an office space fenced-in area, potentially that we might be able to create a small area for those elementary-age students on the grounds, an area that's not used right now by the high school staff. Just in conversation today, I had...we're just beginning to brainstorm the possibility of inviting families, informing families that this is where we're headed, and that inviting families in for an open house, looking at the second week in June, I'm looking at June 11th. So I will invite potential families that might be appropriate for that program, to just get some information from them, what they think would be important for their child, so that there's some opportunity for them to be involved in our conversation and our planning as well. And that's where we're at right now.
Does anybody have any specific questions?
Ms. Hart.
No dollar amounts. I've had none at all. I mean, you've had a nice list of all that needs to happen, but...
I did. I can update that and get it out. I didn't plan it. We really...it was about a week and a half ago that we kind of changed gears, because we were looking elsewhere. So I don't have a dollar amount. It's not very different.
That's okay. Okay.
It's not very different than the other program we talked about in district, because it's the same idea, so it's not a huge dollar change. But I can have that when you're ready.
Other discussion?
Seeing none, thank you for the updating, Ms. Buell. Item 7.6 is a report from Board Liaisons regarding attendance to organizations and committee meetings. Is there anybody wishes to give a report this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 7.7, and this is the 2012, 2013, and 2013, 2014 Board of Ed budget discussions. Turnover. Dr. Conway to kick this off.
Thank you, Mr. Buell. Beginning with the 13, 14 budget, I know Mr. Picaro is handing out something about the 12, 13, so...the 13, 14 budget, the Town Council did set a special meeting for this evening, starting at 7:30, and they are discussing what they are going to do for the next referendum, what they're going to set the budget at. So we do not have a representative there, so we're not sure what their discussion is or what their direction is. But I didn't know if the board wanted to set another date, another date for a discussion about the 13, 14 budget. The board, excuse me, the council can set a referendum date anywhere from seven to 14 days after they meet. So with their meeting tonight, the referendum could not be any sooner than next Wednesday, and could not be any later than following Wednesday. So I'm not sure what they're going to do at this point.
Ms. Hart.
Could we wait to see the results of a referendum before we decide to meet, so that we know what we have to do, not just do what ifs?
Yeah, I don't know when the meeting is going to be. I don't know what action the council's going to take this evening. Ms. Bush, I don't know.
We should probably set a meeting either way.
Just to hold a date, is that...
Just to hold the date with our schedules and things like that. We should probably take a good look and see when we can meet. We're going to probably have to meet no matter what.
So your thought is whether we have to add monies or add things back because we've got additional monies, or whatever the alternative might be?
We're going to have to have a plan. We're going to have to have a plan no matter what.
I don't know if anybody has any specific dates. Dr. Conway, did you have any specific dates that you were thinking?
The board's calendar is pretty full at this point in this time of the year. Certainly, I could throw out dates to tomorrow, based on what the council does this evening, based on the...I think, I don't know which direction you want to meet prior to the referendum, so that you can identify any cuts, if any, that the council has given to the Board of Education Budget. If that's the case, then that will depend...then I'd be able to feed you some dates tomorrow to see if it's before. If you don't intend to identify those cuts prior to the referendum, then that doesn't make any difference.
Which, Mr. Percy?
I've been...I just got a text that the Town Council voted 9-3, passed to put $1 million back in the Board of Ed budget. And that would be the first time, I think, according to attorney outcomings in 40 years.
That's how, you said the motion would do that?
That's passed 9-3. With my...
Oh my God. I'm jumping for joy inside right now. Ms. Hart?
Through you, did they set a date to the referendum?
It just literally, that just passed, because right as she finished, I got the text.
I think we should set a date. I think we should set...
That doesn't mean they can't take more back like they did last week, so let's not get too ahead of ourselves.
The meeting hasn't adjourned, is what you're saying.
They can add it, then they can take it away.
But, you know, I think, you know, it does sound like we may need to take some action to be able to give the town some sense as to what we're going to do, whether it is an addition or a subtraction, so that the voters are informed when they go to vote. So I would, I would recommend that we look at our options. Is, are there dates that we need to just stay right away from, that you know for sure you cannot be there within the next, I would say, week and a half, is what we're looking at, right? I would say for a special meeting. Ms. Hart?
Not June 4th?
The board has negotiations on the floor.
Yep.
Ms. Hart?
Can I toss it out there, that the third of the board awards at the high school, and Dr. Conway's really pretty efficient with getting those being run. My note says they start at 6, but we have the awards and then meet.
Our special expulsion hearing for 7:45 that evening?
Well, I'd rather not do that.
Is that, is that the date, June 7th, 7:45 for the expulsion?
June 3rd.
June 3rd. That we have the awards earlier in the evening, and then we have the expulsion hearing? Mr. Kemp?
Well, it's up to the board. If you wish to totally change the expulsion hearing process and designate the superintendent as the hearing officer, then you won't have a conflict with the expulsion hearing.
And I think we want the superintendent at our, like, the panel.
Yeah, but you could eliminate the board members having to go to an expulsion hearing.
Oh, and then you could hold it at a date, a time of your choices, what you're suggesting, Mr. Kemp, earlier. That is an option. There are a lot of things happening in June, and our, I don't know what our options, there's Wednesday the 5th, I don't know if that's open.
What's policy name?
Thursday the 6th, do we have?
Mr. Percy? Oh, I have state. The 6th is up.
Ms. Hart?
Could we reschedule policy? If, if that 5th is available for everybody, could we consider doing that, Mrs. Fisher?
Mr. Kemp?
I'm not sure who's available and when, right now, the policy committee is on June 6th, correct?
Yeah. Would you be willing to reschedule, June 5th, would you be willing to reschedule that and open that up for a special board meeting that evening?
Yes, I would. Till when, I'm not sure what the options are.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're, you have to decide right at the moment for a policy, but I think if we could settle a, a special meeting date for budget discussion, I think that it's important that we get that information out, so that any public who wants to hear our discussion can be there. If the 5th is a Wednesday. Mr. Kemp?
I'd like to ask Dr. Conway, would she be comfortable, maybe relatively short notice, taking on the role of the expulsion hearing as the hearing officer?
Yes, that's not a problem, Mr. Kemp, if the board desires that.
Ms. Hart?
What does that policy say about the, do you know what the W is?
That is...
I believe we can designate a hearing officer.
A hearing officer, or a three-member panel, or a, or a core, that is three options.
I can't recite this specific policy, my connection's not working. Mr. Kemp?
It does not have to be a permanent solution. A motion could be made to make it permanent, but I'll move that the, what is the date, Mayor?
The expulsion hearing is the 3rd, the policy committee is the 5th.
I move that the expulsion hearing of June 3rd be in the form of a hearing officer, who will be the superintendent on that one, so that's just that occasion.
One occasion for this particular third. And do I have a second on that motion? Mr. Nicholson? A motion to designate Dr. Conway as the hearing officer for the June 3rd expulsion hearing, basically freeing up that evening for board. Is there discussion on that motion? Ms. Hart?
I'd support the motion if that was the only option available to us, but Mr. Kemp just said that he'd be willing to reschedule the policy committee meeting on that Wednesday. So my preference would be if board members are available on Wednesday, that we do it, that we do it then.
Mr. Nicholson?
What would be the earliest date for the next referendum? Would that be next Wednesday?
The earliest date would be Wednesday, the 5th.
So we could schedule a meeting until after the referendum vote?
And that could be the day of the referendum, right? Today's Tuesday, yes. Earliest day is the 5th.
Hope you wouldn't know the results.
Mr. Percy?
Personally, I prefer to have it on Monday. I like the idea, we're already there, we're already out. We, you know, I guess I'm being a little selfish, but if we have also Wednesday night, I'll be out Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday night, if we can squeeze it in, I prefer to kilt the birds more still.
So you're in favor of...
The motion is to designate the expulsion as a hearing officer format.
And that is to free up the objective of...
Well, yeah, I understand all that, but...
Free up June 3rd. Motion is on the floor. Is there any other discussion on the motion to have Ms., Dr. Conway be our hearing officer that evening, or that day? Seeing none, I'm going to call that motion to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor of having Dr. Conway be the hearing officer? I'm calling the motion, okay? And those opposed, and those abstaining, I got one abstention. And the motion does carry. Ms. Hart, I don't, didn't record your vote.
Oh, I'm fine.
So you're in favor of the hearing officer, okay? Motion passes, 7, would be one abstention. Ms. Hart?
So where does that leave the special meeting to talk about the budget?
We could do it June 3rd now, we're open, we could be open that evening, Dr. Conway's able to reschedule her here.
Can you talk about the...
It would be after the awards ceremony.
It would be after the awards ceremony, but before the referendum.
Yes.
And would it not be better to have, to wait until we know the results of the referendum to, to our planning? I would prefer to wait till we know what the vote is. We're going to have to meet, whatever happens with the referendum, we're going to have to meet anyway.
If the folks who are voting on the referendum are interested in what we're going to do with the monies, if they're giving us monies back, and we do not tell them in advance, are we doing them a disservice? I don't know. I mean, we have, we know what our original budget was, and I would assume we would go back to those items, but we haven't told anyone that. And I think that's the point of having a meeting before the referendum. So we basically are establishing what we're going to do with any monies, whether it's a positive or a negative.
So we would in fact still be planning more cuts?
Well, at this point, it sounds like Mr. Percy indicated that there's a million dollars being put back.
Because I wouldn't recommend making any more cuts.
We've already taken cuts based on the current budget where it failed last. I'll give it to Mr. Percy. Mr. Percy?
I'd like to agree with Dean, because I've heard many people say, you know, you could look at it from both sides, whether, but if we, the council's offering to put a million dollars back into referendum, I think we owe the public where, where we're going to put it, and hopefully that gets them out to vote, because this is what we're putting back in. So if this referendum doesn't pass, for whatever reason, it could go back down, and I doubt it's ever going to go up again, but that's, I agree with Mr. Holt, thank you.
So are we back to June 3rd?
Yes.
Well, that's the date that we're discussing, after our, we have a awards night at Rockville High School that evening, and I would suggest, as soon as we adjourn the awards night, that we would have a special meeting. I would suggest that we have that set up in the library, only because the acoustics are better in the library, and Mr. Baldwin would be able to have the equipment in that room before we, we get there.
So 7:30-ish?
How about that? So that...
7:30, June 3rd.
So that's the, is that in the form of a motion that we would, my hearing, you make a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, for a special meeting to discuss budget on June 3rd at 7:30.
At the high school?
At the Rockville High School, in the library, Dr. around, Ms. Hart?
Second.
It's the second. So I have a motion and a second, discussion on the motion. Seeing none, I'm going to call that motion to a vote by a show of hands, all in favor, and that's unanimous. Mr. Kemp?
I'm happy to hear the news from the council, I, however, we don't know some of the details, and one of which is the student-based supplemental funding that we, on June 5th, May 15th, took action on and sent a letter to the town, with the expectation that those funds of $128,580 be transferred to the Board of Education. So we need to have our business manager make as diligent an effort as possible to find out exactly what that motion was this evening, and also if the transfer has occurred yet, because that $128 does not require council action.
Correct, and that's for this year's budget, that's the 2013, 2014 budget, yes. So, and you do have a letter in front that was sent to the mayor's office requesting that transfer. And it is exactly that, a request of the transfer, based on the law that is attached.
So the councilors understand the difference in which year?
This, this was not sent to the council, this is only sent to the mayor, because, again, he's the executive officer for the town, and...
Well, yeah, but I, I'd love to have seen this debate this evening, if that didn't come up at all, fine, then they put a million into the, what do you think?
I'm willing to bet, Mr. Kemp, this was not an agenda item for this evening, this, this letter was not an agenda item for this evening. Other discussion on the 2012, 13 budget, Dr. Conway, did you have?
On into 2012, 13? 13, 14?
Did you have something, Ms. Conway?
Mr. Pacaro and I have, I actually went over and met with the mayor to inform him of what the board's plan was to request the funds, so that he would be aware. This letter did finally officially go today, it's on next Tuesday's agenda, so we did get the amount to that agenda. A request for funding, you're correct, this is, it is our opinion and Attorney Dorsey's opinion, that this is not a request that goes through the town council, this is funding that should be put into the account. I have been informed that this is not going to be an easy deposit, and so there will be a lot of discussion about the $128,000 between the board and the, and town hall and the mayor's office. The other pieces, the board had originally made a motion to request up to $200,000, which we felt was, even though it was tight, we felt that that was a good amount. This is only Mr. Pacaro's second year here, if you recall, and so we have run into the situation where, instead of $30,000 a week, is it a week? Can't be a week, a month, thank you. For substitute teachers, we are now at $60,000 that people are out, and so we do expect that trend to continue, and so we are concerned with the $200,000 amount, and we are asking the board to consider asking up to $300,000, and through you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Pacaro could speak to this, thank you, Mr. Pacaro.
Thank you, through the chair. As Dr. Conway stated, one of the primary drivers we're looking at are bottom line after implementing the deficit mitigation plan, and you can see, if I can draw your attention to the year-to-date, the new bottom line that we're experiencing right now has gone from 1.5 million as a result of our deficit mitigation plan to 234,646. Where we like to be, in order to be in sync with our plan, is at 137,150 or less, but clearly we're over that, and as Dr. Conway stated, one of the primary drivers is our substitute teaching costs, we can budget about 30,000 a month, we're experiencing 60, we're expecting that trend to continue for the next two pay periods. Another primary driver to that cost difference from where we projected to where we are now is that we recently experienced $40,000 special education cost, and this cost was a direct result of the State Department of Education approving a retroactive rate change for residential students, retroactive to July 1st. I can't make this up, it resulted in $40,000 in additional cost to, to the Board of Education, and we've had additional costs coming in, so between the substitute teaching and the special ed costs, we respectfully request the board consider adding an additional $100,000 to our request for a total of $300,000 from our CIGA shared returns premium stabilization funds, these funds are currently being held, this is out of our share of 318,000 total, these are our Board of Ed funds that are currently being held in a town-managed medical reserve fund, and this would have no impact on the general fund at the town.
And if I may add, Mr. Holt, that, that is the request that is on the, we don't have a number in there at this point, but there is a placeholder on the agenda at the town council meeting, awaiting what the board's decision is tonight for a discussion for the town council.
Thank you, Mr. Percy?
I'd like to go back to the student-based supplemental funding for a moment. Dr. Conway, you said the mayor said that this is going to be a tough bit of money to get out of the town.
Yes.
Do they not read the law the same way that our attorney, the difference in law?
I don't think I have an answer for that, that question.
Let me throw it at you this way. If the town attorney says it's not our money, our attorney says it's our money, do we have to sue the town to get our money?
And I'm not sure if the mayor was speaking on behalf of the town attorney, I haven't been informed that the town attorney has looked at this.
I'm just, no, I'm saying, I can set it, I can set it.
Yes, that would be the case.
So now the town's going to have to pay an attorney, we're going to have to pay an attorney. All right, thank you.
Other discussion, and is there anybody trying to make a motion to satisfy the request that you heard, Mr. Pacaro, to kill on? Ms. Fisher, and then, Ms. Hart?
Well, I can make the motion to bump it up to $300,000 as opposed to the $200,000 that we approved last time.
So I would look for a second on that motion, then allow you to talk to motion with, Mr. Percy?
Second.
Motion and a second, and, Miss Fisher?
I just have a quick question for Mr. Pacaro, and I know this probably won't amount to much, but our food service director has been gone for a while, and I know we have not hired someone for this, or are we seeing any savings in that?
Through the chair, food service director position in cafeteria services enterprise fund separate from the local budget.
All right, of course.
Ms. Hart?
Just making this new motion, just...
Just making this new motion, just supersede the previous motion? Or does someone who was on the prevailing side need to amend the previous motion? Because we did say up to $200,000. My assumption would be that we need to, someone on the prevailing side of that motion needs to make an amendment to that motion. Or will we end up with two motions, one that says 200 and then one that says 300?
Did I hear you use the word amendment?
Yeah.
That we're amending the original motion? And the seconder is good with using the word amend the original motion, if I would have.
Did he second the original motion?
No, I don't think you need to have the exact motion because that motion did pass. It passed. So I believe we can take the action in the way that we used it. Any further discussion on that motion to amend the original, to go up to $300,000? Seeing none, we're going to call that motion to a vote by a show of hands. All in favor? And that's unanimous. Is there any other discussion on the current 12-13 budget or 13-14? Okay. We're done with that subject. Let's see here. Okay, so we're now at point 7.8, which is a school safety and security update, which we anticipate we're going to go into executive session to discuss that. And we also have 7.9, which is also going to be an executive session. But I would suggest that we go in for 7.8. There is a, on 7.9, there is an anticipated motion after that. So we will be taking some additional action once we are done with our executive sessions. How would you like to proceed, Mr. Percy?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for 7.8.
And can we invite?
Officer Lambless, the superintendent. Mr. Procaro.
Could you please give us the attendees that you would like to?
If I may, through the chair, also include our logistics officer as well. He's been instrumental in our security efforts.
Mr. Corey Lawf and Tane as well. Thank you. And Dr. Conway?
Second.
Mr. Sar?
Second.
I have a motion in a second to go into executive session. We're going to go across the way to the conference room for that conversation so we don't have to make everybody leave here. Unless everybody's going to leave here anyways. It looks like it's easier for them to leave. Go ahead. Okay. Thank you.
We're good.
Okay, we were out of the executive session. It's 10:26 PM. And Ms. Fisher.
I'm going to let the Verdict Board of Education approve the list of interviewees as discussed for the superintendent's 360-degree evaluation for 2012-13.
Do I have a second on that one, Mr. Nichols? Is there any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call it a vote. I show of hands, all in favor. And that's unanimous. And, uh, let's see here. Uh, any updates for the calendar this evening? Seeing none, on. Actually, we're going to post a special meeting tomorrow or get that out there so that we have that information out there. Um, nine point, there's no press. One final motion, Ms. Bush.
Move to adjourn.
At 10:27, motion to adjourn is our second. Ms. Goldich. And that's all in favor. And that's unanimous.